Good evening, Robin.
Good evening, everyone. How are you guys?
Good evening, Robin.
Good evening, Robin. Boy, your son is getting so tall, Robin.
Yeah, I think he's the same height though for the last couple of months, so.
Well, I haven't seen him in over a year.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
Hi, Chris.
It's Chris. He's on time.
Yes, he is. That's nice. Okay, good evening, everybody. It is now 5:30. And this is our city council study session for August 24th, 2020. And once again, for the governor's emergency proclamation 20-28, the city of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings at this time. And in accordance with that, per Auburn Resolution 5533, we are conducting these meetings virtually and telephonically until King County enters into Phase 3 of the Governor's Safe Start Phase reopening plan. And Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Troutmanwell.
Here.
All right, thank you. Council, we do have agenda modifications for this evening. So Agenda Item 3A is going to be moved down on the list. And Agenda Item 3B, which is Ordinance Number 6781, will be our first topic of discussion, then followed by Ordinance Number 6776. You also should have received in your packets, Item Number 43G, I believe, yeah, 3G, 6787 ordinance, which is vehicle impounds, and that's been added to the agenda as well. So we will begin this evening with Ordinance Number 6781, and Director Tate.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council. I am going to run through a little bit of a reminder and kind of a short presentation on Ordinance 6781. First thing I want to mention is that this begins on page 14 of your packet. And thank you for the flexibility to move this item to be the first item of discussion tonight. Recall that Ordinance 6781 was first presented to City Council during the July 27th study session. I had mentioned back then that this ordinance was collectively authored by multiple departments, including administration, police, parks, public works, legal, and human resources. Community Development is offering administrative support for preparing the packet and moving it forward. On July 27th, Council had questions about how camping regulations and enforcement would apply to members of our homeless community. So Ordinance 6781 is a lot about camping regulations, and it applies equally to everybody throughout the community irrespective of their their whether they have housing or not. Some council members wanted to explore some different ideas for create, you know, making sure that there's greater certainty on the philosophy of how the ordinance is implemented. And I think that's maybe a starting point is to just show on page 17 of your packet, a number of recitals were added in or whereas statements that were added in to the ordinance that attempt to articulate a philosophy that begins with service and assistance before moving into later steps of enforcement and penalty. So when you're looking at the version that's in front of you now, you'll see those strike-through underlying whereas statements on page 17, which is new language from what was presented on July 27th. Additionally, Councilmember Sterns wanted to know more about how the draft ordinance would apply to Washington State court case that he mentioned, and I know that he and the city attorney's office were able to have some conversation about that. And I'd leave it to either Councilmember Sterns or Legal if they want to add more about that particular item, but since it came from one council member, I'll just mention that there was some follow-up conversation about that. There were also questions on July 27th about the level and type of enforcement action. So that was an item that I know that particularly Councilmember Sterns and Councilmember Jay Raj had questions about. I do want to point out that Councilmember Sterns provided some very thoughtful feedback on the ordinance. We got that on Friday, so it's not reflected in your packet. And but I'm sure that that means that Councilmember Sterns is going to want to spend a little bit of time this evening making some suggestions and asking some questions potentially. So just like as we did on July 27th, because this is a virtual meeting, and even though community development is listed next to the topic, there's a lot of departments involved in this, so I'm really going to serve as a moderator to help direct the questions to the staff that are part of this evening's meeting. And then just ask if there are questions about the different changes or the philosophy that we've put into the recital statements or anything else that's in the packet. So with that, I respectfully turn it back to Council for discussion.
Hey, Jeff, thank you. And yes, thank you for pointing out Councilmember Sterns' questions and information he's provided. So I think at this time, I will turn over to Councilmember Sterns and let him go ahead and continue on what you've mentioned about some of his recommendations. Councilmember Sterns.
Oh, um, thank you. And I just raised my hand, so it's lower than it. Thank you. Still getting used to Zoom. So, thank you. And I did want to say, you know, I had a chance to look at the recitals that were added, and I thought they were really, you know, really good, really helpful. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for that. So what I wanted to do is just sort of go through my my particular concerns and then go through some solutions that I suggested. And those would be, you know, in the form of either, I guess, amendments to the resolution or, you know, if people want, I mean, if there's a process to change the resolution before it's actually brought for a vote, that would be another way. But so I'll go through them. So, you know, the biggest concern I had is really just that there are criminal penalties in the ordinance for both trespassing in a city park and for camping on city property. And as we know, the Boise decision in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals really puts some strong limitations on what cities can do. But, you know, I prefer, you know, that my first solution would be to go to a civil infraction and just make that just any penalty would be civil in nature. And I do that because, you know, I just can't, I rack my brain, and I just cannot find or think of anything where imprisoning or jailing a homeless person is going to do anything to make that person better off, to make them safer, or to make them more likely to receive treatment. And I can't find any evidence that that does, so, you know, essentially that that approach works. And then I coupled that with just the other, you know, fact, which is that criminal records, having a criminal record makes it actually harder for people to find jobs, to find housing, to become more stable and more self-sufficient. And then I just, you know, the thing that sort of serves as a backdrop, not just the law, but also basic human rights, or the right to shelter, the right to sleep, the right to rest and the right to privacy. So that's the first issue. And then the second and final issue is that, you know, I just, I can't support a tent ban in city parks at this time. You know, if there's some other way to parks itself, but certainly having, you know, four sides and a roof and a floor seems really important. You know, everyone deserves, I believe, I'm sorry, I believe that everyone deserves to protect themselves from the elements, especially as we're entering fall and winter, and there's going to be wind, rain, and snow. So that's one part. And then the second part, of course, is that people deserve a right to privacy. There is an actual right of privacy, but I think just in layman's terms, people deserve the right to sleep and to change and to have, not have people look in at them. And that applies even if you cannot afford to live in a house or an apartment, some kind of rigid structure. If you have to live in a tent, I don't think you should give away those same rights that a regularly housed person has. So those are the issues and the solutions I've suggested with language is that we remove the criminal penalties in the law and replace them with three-tiered civil infraction coverage, which is basically, I borrowed that from the City of Olympia. So the first infraction would be like $50, and the second infraction would be, oh, what is the second infraction? 125. And then the third infraction goes up to the RCW level of 250 as a maximum. The second solution I suggested was building on those preambles. And, you know, as a lawyer and as someone who's just drafted legislation, I can tell you that, you know, the intent of a legislative body is really important, but it's not law. And putting something in a preamble is really important, but I think my belief is that the burden is on us to, you know, put our money where our mouth is. And so I would want to see an actual statutory duty imposed on the city to first offer housing or mental health or drug addiction or employment or other types of services to individuals who are homeless prior to being able to take enforcement action. And then there are sort of two other small, smaller issues, but I think they're important. One is that the legislation talks about a 40-mile radius, and I use one of those map generators. 40 miles is cute. I mean, it goes down to Olympia, which I do remember because I used to commute to the State Agriculture Commission 42.5 miles. And Lindwood. And so, you know, I sort of just took a little bit of a look with the map radius generator and, you know, 15 miles actually includes Tacoma, Pala, Maple Valley, Buryan, and Red. So I would suggest shrinking 40 down to 15. And lastly, I would also want to clarify that if we're going to ask people, you know, the bill talks about there not being available shelter in Auburn, but outside within that radius. And I just want to clarify that if that's the case, and there is room available, that that we get confirmation, that someone confirms either to the person who's homeless or the city that there's room, and secondly, that they can get to that space at no cost. So even if there's public transportation, we need to figure out a way to get them there at no cost. And then the final thing I'll just say is that I would prefer to get some kind of data, really around four areas, but the first two are the most important. What is the actual homeless population in Auburn? Secondly, what is, you know, what's the, do we have any sense of what the rate of growth in that is? In the last year, five years, 10 years? Thirdly, how many beds are available in Auburn? I mean, just so we can have some kind of, you know, sense of realistic expectations, beds available versus number of homeless people in Auburn. And then also, I think just a follow-up to that would be how many beds are available, you know, in, within that radius, if we know that. So those are the big concerns I have, and I, you know, hopefully we can work to address, address those before we move forward. I really appreciate you all indulging me, and thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Other council members, questions, comments, before we turn it back over to Director Tate for some response? Okay, Director Tate, would you like to respond to some of Councilmember Sterns' comments?
Yeah, sure. And at first, I'll just point out a couple things just to make sure. I know Councilmember Sterns has read the ordinance really well, but I do want to point out a couple things that are in the ordinance that, even if they need a little bit of better articulation that are there. And then I'm going to actually ask Kent Hay if he can jump in, because I know that he has some thoughts and opinions about some of the concepts as well and how it's implemented. The part that I want to point out is just to make sure everybody is really clear that on pages 19 and into 20 of your packet, the section on camping that does speak to camping being prohibited, after the prohibition clause on page 19, when you move into page 20, there are exceptions that are listed in. And we've tried, I think, to write something in there that, it's actually Section Large C, and then Item Number 2, that the person is experiencing homelessness and is there, and there's no available overnight shelter for persons experiencing homelessness on the date that the prohibited activity occurs. So at least the intent on that statement is that we wouldn't be, as a city, taking action against anybody unless there's shelter available. So if there's no shelter available, it really tries to carve out exceptions for the enforcement actions or the penalties that would be, that would be leveraged. So I did want to point that out. I do, I don't know, I think that it's probably worthwhile pointing out that in going through Councilmember Sterns' comments, there's a whole bunch of things that Councilmember Sterns suggested that I think are really good clarifications. So even though there's some core issues that we have to talk through, I think, with respect to the type and level of enforcement action and things of that nature and the radius, I do want to make sure that, to acknowledge the effort that he put into it and clarifying some of the whereas statements and just improving some of the clarity in some of the statements that are being made in the ordinance. So I'm going to actually ask if Kent Hay would jump into the discussion, at least start answering or providing some input on some of those core principles that Councilmember Sterns was just articulating.
Yeah. Hello, council members. Can everybody hear me? All right, cool. So first, so I think one of the concerns Councilmember Sterns had was offering services first, and that is our approach here in the City of Auburn is every time I make contact. So again, for the most part, I go out by myself every day to every single, well, not every single park that we have, but to the ones that definitely have a high rate of homelessness to make sure that we're offering services and trying to get those people out into shelters so we can continue working on their situation. So we do offer services first. I do provide case management as well as outreach. There's nothing I don't do. And so I do sign people up for benefits and that type of stuff. Now, people decide that they don't want to help, which some people, you know, are not ready to take. It doesn't mean that you get a pass and that you just decide not to participate. The goal is, you know, we do want to make it uncomfortable enough for people to come to the table so we can get them out of this situation. About the radius, so it's King County. We are taxpayers, and we do pay for shelters all the way up until, you know, King County to Redmond and Bellevue. I just gave you a brief story real quick of a lady who comes down from the Sophia's Way Shelter in Bellevue every day to come to our Auburn Shelter, Day Shelter, to get services. I'm not sure why, but we do help her, and then she goes all the way back to Bellevue to sleep in Belgium. So people are able to get around and willing to go to different shelters outside of Auburn, even if it's in a 40-mile radius. So all these shelters are available. And again, one of the things that we want to clarify is that we don't have all the shelters in Auburn. We don't have a family shelter. We don't have, you know, certain type of shelters. And so some of those shelters are not here. They might be in Redmond. They might be in Bellevue. They might be in Redmond. You know, and so those are the places, if there's available shelters, and we can get people there at no cost because we do provide bus tickets, or some shelters we even send a lift to pick people up and bring them back to the shelter. So we don't charge people to get to shelters. Another thing for Councilmember Sterns also, I heard you say about the, you know, getting people, people to have four, you know, four walls around them in the tent situation. I just give you a real quick story of a guy I'm working with by the name of Patrick in the park, who last year, he decided not to go into shelter, and he woke up and the snow had collapsed his tent on top of him. And when he woke up, he was frozen. His feet were frozen. And luckily, he was close enough to the shelter to somehow get there, but by the time he got there, he couldn't really thaw out, so they took him to the hospital, and he spent some time in the hospital. And even today, when I'm talking to him, he has ting, you know, his fingers are tingling, and his toes are tingling. It's hard for him to work. And so the goal is really, because people understand what people want, but there's difference between needs and wants. And so being able to get someone where we're working with them right now to understand that you need to go inside, that we need to get you out of this situation before we get to winter, and not wait till we're at winter, trying to mask people into, you know, the shelter in Auburn, is really the goal. I'm trying to think what was, oh, and the criminal part of it, I understand that. So I've been here since April. We've not arrested one person. And I've enforced the park rules, make it very clear, and we have, everybody in the parks has an understanding. And so we all still work together, even though they've moved to a different part of the park where they know I can't mess with them because they're on King County property. They still, they still come to me for help. I still meet them at the Ray of Hope. I sign them up for benefits. We have a very, you know, we have a good, good rapport. You know, they know I'm going to be there. They know I'll help them. I found a guy, just one more story real quick. I found a guy the other day camped out by Safeway in the, in the bus depot area there. And he had given up, for the most part, as a veteran. He was about 60 years old, but he looked like he was about 80. He just left housing in February, and he was sitting there, and he's an alcoholic, and he was crying. And so I was talking to him about getting him out of that situation, and I told him I'd come back. And so I didn't come back the next day, but I found him. He told me where he was sleeping at. He was sleeping at between, you know, the bus area and the cell station. And so you couldn't really see him. He was on a walker. And so I found him there, got him up, made a phone call to somebody I knew from SSDF, the program there. They came down. We got that guy into a motel that same day. And he never thought anybody would come back from. And so he was very thankful. I put him in my car, and I drove him all the way to to Buryan, no, I'm sorry, SeaTac, to get him in a hotel, and we'll work on getting his VASH housing. But, you know, some, the, the way this works is people have to know that there is someone who cares, and caring doesn't always mean giving. Caring means holding people accountable sometimes to let them know that this is not a life that you should have to live, and we want you to do better, and we're going to help you do better. And we're not just pushing you around in circles. Structure does work, and people are looking for structure.
Kent, thank you very much, and definitely thank you for the work that you're doing in Auburn. You know, to have you on board and to meet with these people on a daily basis is truly a blessing. It's really helpful. To hear that story about the veteran, it does choke you up a little bit. That is, that's a real heart-wrenching story. To be able to help somebody like that and get them into shelter and know that they can be taken care of is just tremendous. And I hope our VASH voucher system is working well and we're able to help the veterans as much as we can with that. Council, any other questions for Director Tate? Mayor, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to also share with you, I was speaking with some of our officers just in the last couple of days, and we were specifically talking about Kent and the work that he is doing. And they were so complimentary of Kent's style, the compassion, but the accountability, but also how having Kent out there, he has a police radio, but he's not calling for police assistance unless there is something that is completely out of his control. And I don't know that that has occurred yet. But he's freeing up our officers to do the work that we are expecting of them, and it is not an interaction between officers and homeless individuals. And so that in and of itself is creating some of, some of that work that we have talked about, that has been in the news about reforms. So this is really exactly the type of approach that I believe people are looking for. Our residents are expecting accountability from all levels in this process, and Kent is providing that. And as he said, also, we are expecting, or we are, we are expecting better for those individuals than, let's say, some cities who may come out and hand out blankets or a sleeping bag or a sandwich. Really what that's saying to the individuals is, this is all that you deserve. We're going to give you this, and we don't expect anything more from you. Now, I am one of those compassionate, you know me. I will tear up at any story about someone who is struggling. But this really is an approach that I can see working very well for us in Auburn. And to get people the services that are available, like Kent has said, there's nothing he can't do. And so far, he has definitely proven that to me. But to get people into the services that they so greatly deserve, and our tax dollars are being spent on. And so that's where I just, I hope that you can embrace this, this type of accountability model that we are, that we are looking to continue to piece together. And I know I've chatted with some of you about it, but just wanted to add my, my experiences recently with Kent and the work that he's doing.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, a question for you. The shelter we have now, I believe it's 40 beds, correct if I'm wrong, and are we experiencing full capacity at that site?
I don't believe so, and Kent can answer that more because he is there almost on a daily basis. I do not believe we are at capacity at this point. And as he mentioned, we are paying for services throughout King County, and that's why that radius was set at 40, because some of those services are provided in Seattle and beyond.
Yeah, and just, just a heads up, some people, when I'm talking to them, they don't want to go inside, which is fine. I can't make you go inside. But, you know, calling a tent city that may be in Seattle when they're already camping out here is something that both couples, you know, if it's a couple, they can go to and still feel like they're not indoors, and they still camp in a safe place. So again, it's utilizing all the different, you know, providers and services that we have throughout King County to help people get from outside into a safe place and work on their stuff.
Kent, thank you again. Jeff, in relation to the comments and the recommendations made by Councilmember Sterns, what do you see as our next steps with this ordinance?
Well, I do see that both Councilmember Sterns and Councilmember Malanga have raised their hand. So I mean, I have thoughts on answering that question. I just don't want to get in front of Council's conversation. So I'm happy to respond, but maybe you want to come back to me?
Yeah, that'd be good. I'm sorry, I haven't been able to see raised hands, and I guess I'm trying to do that by Zoom. So Council, if you have questions for that, and you're not, Teresa's not acknowledging your raised hand on Zoom, just do me a raised hand like that so I can see you, and we'll do that. So Councilmember Malanga, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the questions that came up, and I don't think we've had an answer yet, was, um, how many homeless do we have in Auburn right now? Because that was, I think, part of Councilmember Sterns' questions was, how many do we have? And then if we had the capacity for those folks? And then my question is, is, I don't know if this is true, and that was probably a question for Kent. I've heard that single males with children, sometimes it's hard for them to find or get into shelters. Is that true, or is that just made up rumor?
So I answered the, I'm not, with the regards to the, um, how many folks that are homeless in Auburn, I don't have that answer. I wasn't, I don't know the one-night count that happened last year and could tell you exactly how many people were homeless in Auburn at that time.
It does not break it out by city. The, the new way of counting for the point-in-time count is by It does not break it out by city. The, the new way of counting, uh, for the point in time count is by sub-area. We are in southwest King County and so we are provided that information.
Um, as far as the single man and, and, um, children, um, you know, Mary's place and, and some of the family shelters take single men with children, as long as you have children, you know, you're, you're a family. Um, there are safe parking programs, there's shelter options for families. Um, so, you know, it's not, I don't think it's, it's, it's not as difficult that I, I find, as long as you're, you know, you have kids and you're a family and shelters are open to you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Trump, Manuel, then Councilmember Sterns.
Yes, I, I do believe that I asked Ken last time that he gave a small report about, you mentioned that you have put some people into housing and to shelter. And we asked you if you could give us an update on how many you have helped. And, um, and what was the next step? And I haven't received anything of an update from you on how many people you have helped in Auburn.
Oh, sorry about, um, the last number. Oh, no, maybe that was at the paper. So, um, right now, um, I believe we've housed about five people, um, counting the, the, the guy just got, um, into shelter, um, through the VA. Um, and then, uh, and those people are doing well. Um, one story, I'll, I'll just tell you about a guy I had when I first got here and why it's so hard. Um, is there's a guy that was living in the park who was on a, a walker. Um, he was about seventy seven year old. He had a lot of hip issues and just a lot of different issues. And he was making his way from the park all the way to the day shelter, back and forth constantly climbing over woods and hoping not to fall, um, in his tent. And so I went out there and I worked with them, assigned them up for benefits, made some phone calls and finally got him in the housing. When I got him in the housing and the housing was in, I got him in an adult family home in Renton. Um, he, he called me that probably not, I don't know, two days, three days later, and he wanted to come back out. He did not want to be in housing anymore. Even though he begged me to get him in the housing, he wanted to come back because he was used to the environment of being out in the bushes and, and kind of the chaos that happens out there. Um, and so every week I would take his call and tell him he can't come back. And if he came back, I was gonna make it real hard for him not to, to, to be camping out here. And so um, after a couple of weeks of answering text messages and calling him and reassuring him that he's gonna be okay. He's doing well. He's still in housing. And so he's not ready to come out. He wants to get his surgery and, and take care of his stuff. So um, the majority of people that have gotten housing through the VA or, or in housing have stayed in the housing. Only one person has, uh, has not been able to stay in housing. I'm still working with her.
Great. Thank you very much for, um, giving us those stories as well because you know, we do still see them out there and it's kind of hard. Uh, and I, and I know when, when we first started doing the homeless here in Auburn, there was a lot of them uh, that said they wanted to be out there by choice. Uh, they didn't want to go home. They didn't want to get into a house. And so I was kind of a little saddened to hear that because where, here we were offering them a place to stay and they chose to stay outside. So thank you very much for your stories.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the not getting back to you.
Okay, Councilmember Sterns?
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, it's so, so, so good to hear all the, um, you know, really impressive and powerful work that you're doing, Ken. Um, I, I, I do get a chance to interact with people, um, living out along the river and, uh, you know, most of them know who you are and really, they really like it. So that, that's pretty cool. Um, I, I was just gonna add that, you know, I mean, certainly, you know, it sounds like your approach, um, cities approach, um, is to, um, you know, is to offer services first and, and, you know, to not impose criminal on penalties. So I, I, all I'm saying is I think that strengthens my argument that, that, that is the correct approach. I'm, I'm more confident now than ever that we should not be imposing, uh, criminal sanctions based on what we do already. And also that we should put in duty to, um, offer services first because that's what we're doing. So it, it, it doesn't sound like that would be too much of a stretch. So I, I, I just want to thank, you know, just thank all, everyone at this city who's doing, you know, the, just, just work saving lives. My, my thanks to you all.
Thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, so what I would suggest for moving forward is, um, uh, first of all, um, again, Councilmember Sterns, the, the comments that he provided, I think, um, fall into one of three categories. One are just, there's some comments that are just, um, easy to incorporate, good clarification. They don't address legal or philosophical issues. It's just good language to add. Um, so there's that. And I think that staff would just, uh, uh, craft a next iteration that incorporates those pieces. Then, um, there's language probably in there that we need to make sure that the city attorney's office is comfortable with. Um, so I want to, uh, remind council that the, uh, city attorney's office, uh, did provide support on, uh, drafting all of these regulations. Uh, they did look at it through the lens of the Boise case to make sure that uh, the city's approach was the right approach with that relatively recent decision. But I, I think we all, we have to, uh, make sure that legal is comfortable with, um, those provisions. And, um, and, uh, then the third item is some philosophical things. And I think that the way that I would recommend approaching this is that we narrow down to the philosophical pieces. And I feel a good example of that is what is the penalty? What should be the penalty for violating the law? And there are options. And I think that staff can still present its position and obviously council as the legislative authority uh, can take action on what its choice is. So I think what we probably would want to do, since there's not a way to vote during a study session, is really to present something that is carried forward to council floor for discussion that presents option A and option B where there's a philosophical difference. And, you know, I think this is, this is the legislative process where, you know, staff still wants to make sure that it's, uh, making its case for why we believe, uh, a certain approach is the right approach. Uh, but ultimately when council makes the final decision and if we lay that out as option A and option B, uh, council can make, uh, motions on the floor during a council, a city council meeting. And we get to a point where there's resolution on final legislation. So, um, so again, I think that think that each of those word changes falls into one of those three categories. We can identify how we would categorize those and kind of get the stuff that's easy out of the way. And then focus on the stuff that might be a little harder or, or just, you know, difference of opinions and philosophy. Um, so that's what I would suggest.
Thank you, Jeff. So would, Jeff, would your, um, plan be that this would come before council at our next city council meeting?
Yeah, if, uh, if city council is comfortable with that approach, uh, we have the luxury of having five Mondays this month, which gives us that week to be able to work on, um, incorporating something plus a holiday. Uh, something that would, uh, would be incorporate, uh, that would be scheduled for the September eighth, I believe it is, that Tuesday after Labor Day, uh, council meeting.
So council, maybe just by a head nod, is that something that, uh, you feel we should go forward for the next meeting? Thumbs up, thumbs up, head nods, very good. All right, we will go ahead and do that. And Jeff, thank you once again for all your hard work and Kent, once again, for your tremendous work that you're doing. And, uh, we will move on to our next topic, which moves us back on the agenda to ordinance number six, seven, seven, six. And that would again be under, um, by, so Director Gob on that one.
Good evening. Thank you Deputy Mayor. So tonight we have a short presentation that'll be done by Cecile Malik, um, as well as Jeff Tate and James Nordinger with police talking about our recreational vehicle parking code and some suggested changes to that code. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Cecile.
Good evening Deputy Mayor, Mayor, council members. Um, Dani Kay Fekalha, the presentation up, that would be lovely. Thank you so much. So I am here tonight to bring to you all the announced number six, seven, seven, six, uh, which is, uh, proposed amendment to section ten thirty-six, one, nine, one of the Auburn City Code, which relates to the parking of recreational vehicle within the public right of way. Uh, next slide please. Thank you. So the proposed changes were discussed with different departments because we wanted to make sure to have a holistic approach to this code change. So it was a coordinated effort. Um, legal is not listed, but legal was of course involved in the discussions and the review of the proposed ordinance. Next slide please. Thank you. So on, on this slide, there is a little summary of the changes that are being proposed. But I would like to start by defining the right of way. And the right of way means an area of land designated for transportation purposes. So the current code, the current code does not clearly define the areas for the length of RV parking, which is allowed residential and commercial, which creates some confusion. Uh, it creates confusion to the public, creates confusion for enforcement, but also confusion to um, explain why it's being enforced, enforced in one way in an area, in another way in another area. Um, we have residential properties which are adjacent or in the middle of commercial properties. So it's, it's not very clear. Our existing code is also, um, not very detailed, which makes it hard to educate people about what is and what isn't allowed for parking in the public right of way. Currently does not prohibit RVs from being occupied overnight. Um, it allows parking up to seventy-two hours in commercial areas. I think so, something, can you hear me?
We can still hear you and, and see you and see the slides.
Oh yes, my, sorry, my screen went black and nothing was responding.
So we're hearing you.
Great. You're hearing me clicking around. So, all right, um, okay, so currently the code allows for parking up to seventy-two hours in commercial areas, twenty-four hours in residential areas. But it's not very clearly defined what is what, and it is very difficult to enforce. It's difficult to educate people with. Um, and so, so the proposed, the new proposed code is much more detailed. Um, so what we're proposing is to restrict the RV parking in the public right of way to twenty-four hour citywide. That way it's everywhere the same. Um, we will prohibit, um, RVs from being occupied overnight in the public right of way, which is not currently done in our existing code. We will also create a parking program to allow parking for up to three days in the public right of way with limitations. So it will be, um, very defined program and the, um, the conditions and the limitations are listed in the purpose of the announce on page five of your packet. And it also provides more clarity on what is and what isn't allowed, um, as it relates to RV parking in the public right of way. So the next slide is going to be presented to you by Sergeant Nodenger, who is going to uh, talk about the enforcement side of the process.
For the enforcement part of it, uh, under the new code, uh, first we have to look at whether the, uh, when the complaint comes in, if it is a hazard or not. Uh, if we get a call on a residential vehicle, uh, and somebody calls about it and it is a hazard, uh, and we'll define that as we're wheelchair ramp violations, uh, blocking them, blocking driveways or sidewalks or causing significant line of sight issues. We will take those and we will impound those immediately. But under the new proposed, uh, enforcement, uh, when we get a call and there's no safety hazard, we will come and make contact with the RV. Uh, we will then mark and chalk the vehicle for movement. Uh, we attempt contact with the owner occupant of the RV, uh, and educate them on the rules and regulations set forth in the ordinance. And under this new proposed, uh, enforcement process, we've added a step to contact Kent Hay in our community response team. Uh, to see if they can offer the owner or occupant, uh, services or assistance. And this is, uh, when we talk about homeless and homelessness who are occupying these RVs. So we've added an extra step in there. When we contact the vehicle and we mark it for movement, uh, that we call Kent Hay and our community response teams. Uh, we will come back several, several days later. There's no defined time amount for that. Uh, and the reason is, uh, we only have two parking control officers that work the whole city. Uh, so we may not get back in twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours, but we will make it there within the next several days. Uh, if the vehicle is not moved, uh, we will tag the vehicle with a twenty-four hour notice of removal. Again, we'll contact the owner and occupant. Uh, educate them on the new ordinance. Uh, once the vehicle's been tagged for removal, uh, and that is a twenty-four hour notice. But again, uh, we're not going to get out there for a few days. Uh, and the vehicle, if it still hasn't moved, uh, we will contact Kent Hayes, we will contact CRT, see if services have been offered, if they've accepted it. Uh, we will work with, uh, Kent and our CRT folks, uh, to try to uh, offer assistance to the owners and occupants. But again, uh, if it has not been moved, the vehicle will be ticketed and impounded. So this is a several day process, uh, even though it, it is a twenty-four hour, uh, parking limit, it still takes us a couple of days, uh, well, it takes us several days uh, to complete that process. And again, we've added the step of uh, advising Kent Hay and the, uh, community response team to go out and offer services. And so the next slide, I will turn it over uh, to Jeff Tate.
Yeah, thanks, Sergeant. Um, we thought that, uh, as council considers, uh, what the parking, RV parking requirement should be within the city right of way, that it would be important for council to also have some context for what are the requirements on private property. So, uh, this is already in city code. So this is not part of, uh, the ordinance that is being presented to council. This is just for information and perspective. Uh, so right now city code, um, allows for an RV to be placed on a, a piece of property uh, where there's already a single family home. And when we say that, I mean, anybody can, uh, this doesn't include HOA requirements and HOAs have their own requirements, but it's okay to park an RV on a residentially zoned piece of property. This is really about RVs that are occupied by people. So what the city code, what the zoning code allows is a person who owns a single family residence to allow an RV to park, be parked on their property for up to fifteen calendar days, uh, within a calendar year. To allow an RV to park, be parked on their property for up to fifteen calendar days uh within a calendar year. And those scenarios generally present themselves in the form of. You know, relatives visiting uh on their way through on a larger RV trip. Uh, or um, you have visitors and you have your own RV, so you're allowing your visitors to stay there. And um, so we allow for fifteen days, uh, we allow for an additional fifteen day extension. So really, uh, someone could um have thirty days uh in a row. Uh, we don't require a fee for that request. In fact, we don't, uh, we keep it very informal. People can simply email us and we can reply to the email and say, all right, thank you for letting us know today is day one or whatever day is day one. Uh, usually the way this comes up is a neighbor complains about another neighbor. Uh, so code enforcement will visit the property and we start the clock on the day the code enforcement visits the property. Even if uh the RV's been there for a week or ten days. Uh, we just don't know the date that it started, so we always give property owners the benefit by just saying we're going to start the clock on on the day that we visit. Um, and then we just track it in our uh enforcement and permit tracking system. So we thought that it would be important for council to just have an understanding what happens once you get uh off the city right of way and onto private property.
Next slide please. So for the next steps, we'll be bringing ordinance number six, seven, seven, six to you. For action on September eighth. Uh, if adopted, we will develop and implement the permit program. And of course, we will continue the outreach and education and the enforcement. And I imagine there might be some questions about the proposed code change or maybe the proposed parking program. And I'll try to answer them and what I can't answer, um, I will ask for help.
Hey, council questions?
Council member Trump Manuel has a question.
Jeff uh cleared it up on the last slide that he was referring to. But uh, my other question was also when uh visitors come and visit their family members. And the roads are real narrow and on both sides due to the motorhome being there and being large. And they open up their extended uh part to the sidewalk. But yet it's still real narrow that it only allows just barely one car to go through. Um, how do you address that? Is there any way to address that or because they are allowed to be there, you know, while they're visiting, so that was just my question.
Um, are are you asking that question from uh? Or on private property?
Um, private property, where you said that uh homeowners can have visitors come if they're coming in to visit. They can stay up to fifteen days and being on private, so. And the question was, the road so narrow due to the motorhome being parked there. And then the other uh homeowners that have their cars out in the front. Is there any, is there anything to to make that safer or is there anything that could be done?
Just to be clear, uh, the the allowance to park for fifteen days is on their property, not in the road. So in the road is the right of way. So on the private property, you have to have the ability on that piece of property to to pull the RV into your driveway. And not hang out and block the sidewalk, which most driveways in uh modern subdivisions. You can't accommodate an RV in those kinds of driveways, which then causes uh that property owner to say, oh geez. Well, uh, let's just put you in the street. You're not allowed to park for fifteen days in the street, it would be a twenty four hour uh limitation.
Okay, well, up up around here where I live, it's it's been done several times. Uh, where people come and visit certain families and there's that huge motorhome. And it causes a little bit of problems with vehicle trying to get through there.
So I'm going to jump in, but if if anyone notices. Recre- recreational vehicles parked for extended periods of times on a street. Or the vehicle is causing um concerns about side distance or access or blocking the sidewalk. Um, police should be contacted, there is a police non emergency number. And the um parking enforcement officers will be dispatched and they will start monitoring. They will do education, they will educate the owner of the RV about what they can and can't do. And try to get compliance, but they will also start monitoring um the state. And and ask them to park elsewhere. If it's an imme- imminent um hazard, um, as Sergeant presented, the RV might be towed.
Thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome. Member Sterns and council member Brown have a question.
And council member Sterns followed by council member Brown.
Um, thank you. Um, I had a a couple of questions. One was, um, you had mentioned in the presentation um about, uh. I can't find the present way, I've got it here, uh, under the enforcement process slide. And then you you talked about, um, you may be working with with Kent or the community response team. And I'm just wondering, is is that actually reflected in the ordinance that you're proposing?
So it is addressed in the first section uh within the whereas. To remind the intent of the ordinance. Um, and um, that the intent is to use enforcement as a last result. And instead, we will implement the standards in a manner that prioritizes the combination of education and assistance. In providing the RV occupant with alternatives for relocation.
Okay, so it it's in the whereas, um, and and since that's in there, I I guess what I'm wondering is is. Uh, maybe this is more legal question, but it it just relates to the last ordinance we talked about. You know, how does Boise versus Martin? And does it, does it affect this at all, or maybe it it doesn't? Because in 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 this ordinance, as opposed to the last one, there don't seem to be any criminal penalties. I don't know, is this, is that, am I wrong about that?
Uh, council member sources is uh Harry from legal. I I don't see an impact on Boise versus Martin with this, this is purely administrative. It looks like permit issuance and and parking as opposed to criminal enforcement, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that implicated there.
Okay, council member Brown?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's kind of uh interesting to me, uh, about a week ago, I had somebody who moved their RV. Out of uh the city park, which is a couple of blocks from my house. Uh, and then came and parked next to my house, came to my, I was out front in my front yard. And she came over and said, look, I just wanted to give you a heads up, I'm parking here, I'll be gone in the morning. So my question uh is, is this becoming a growing problem? Is this the reason why we're taking action on this or taking a look at it?
Well, the major problem that we're looking at is the issue with the enforcement. So um, the parking enforcement officers asked for it originally. They said, now, we we need to make it uniform all around the city. But we'd be open to working with a parking program to allow extended parking. But it needs to be um more rigorous, more um clear. We needed to clarify, so we all worked together to make these proposed changes to clarify what is and what isn't. Acceptable in the public right of way as far as parking recreational vehicles, which are large. And and they do pose problem. So our our code currently doesn't say that you can't have a. Uh, a plug going across the sidewalk or um something else going over the sidewalk to block it. Or create a hazard, so this code clarifies that if you're parking your RV, you cannot create any um encroachment. Into the right of way or create a hazard. And so we we try to think about all the different situations that parking enforcement encounters. And try to address this to make sure that public safety is maintained and that enforcement is possible. But also we wanted to make sure that um e- education is number one. People need to understand what the regulations are. Most people don't go on the city website and look at what the code is before they do something. They find out after they get caught doing something they're not supposed to do. And most of the time, they want to do the right thing, so once they learn, well, this is the clear code, these are the clear regulations. Then the they will change what they're doing to follow it. But as as far as the homeless population, I can tell you, I'm in regular contact with parking enforcement. And I know that they work closely with Kent and with the community response team. To try to help them all the time, all the time. They they don't go out there to punish people, they try to provide resources, they try to help. They try to um get them connected to the people that can help. But sometimes you just have to remove the dangerous conditions. If somebody is parked in a way that creates a safety hazard, a public hazard, that hazard has to be removed.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Council member Trump Manuel?
I have a question, at the new site where we're having our homeless people um shelter. I've noticed that there's been some motorhomes or some uh cars with people living on that. Is that being allowed or is that, are they doing that just uh so that they can go there and get something to eat? And uh stay there for a while?
So I'm only vaguely familiar, but I have heard that people come to receive services and then they leave. But um, I have not been in this area recently and maybe the sergeant can have some. More knowledge or or mayor?
I can answer that, this is. Um, so yeah, there is a, currently we have a safe parking program that operates in there. So people can come at night, but they have to leave during the daytime. Um, so they can, you know, people will get off work or or who have to get off the street can come and stay in the safe parking program. But they do have to be gone by a certain time, um, when everybody has to leave the night.
Great, thank you, Kent. Uh, yeah, I think uh having a safe parking program is very important. Of course, that seems to be the proper site and location for it as well, so appreciated that very much. Any other further comments or questions, council? All right, Cecile, thank you, Sergeant, thank you, and Jeff, once again, thank you, uh, good presentation. We will move on to ordinance number six, seven, eight, three with Director Thomas.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor De Corsi, it's Kevin, you're the Assistant Finance Director.
Okay, welcome.
Jamie, thank you, Jamie is taking some vacation, so I'm going to stand in her stead this evening.
All right.
All right, and if you'll bear with me, I'm going to uh pull up a PowerPoint slide to share with you. Just take me a second. There we go, it looks like it came through, okay. So tonight, um, you have an ordinance before you that would make um an amendment to the budget. Budget amendment number seven. Um, and I know that we have some folks that have been through many budget amendments. And for others, this will be new, so I thought I'd start off with a bit of a background. In developing the budget, there's a number of assumptions that underlie that. And they're used to forecast the future financial performance. So consequently, not all of those assumptions hold water. Um, and so we have our city staff monitoring the adopted budget performance to actual results. And to give you some examples of budget items that have an assumption associated with it. Uh, think about sales tax revenues. You know, we have to give consideration to what we think might occur. On, you know, the uh, the mall basis or other sales tax items. Another one is investment returns, uh, you know, not so long ago, we had pretty much a zero percent return on investments. And as we're developing this budget, those returns were increasing as the economy was improving. And finally, another example is, uh, you know, we're looking at medical plan offerings. And typically, we won't get that from the insurance broker in September or something. But even then, that's somewhat of a, an estimate. And the actual can vary from what we place into the budget. On top of that, uh, we also have unforeseen events that transpire and we're living one of those right now. And those can and do impact budget performance. Uh, to account for those differences, uh, the budget amendment or adjustment is periodically brought forth for council discussion and approval. And tonight, we have ordinance number six, seven, eight, three, which, as I mentioned, is a seventh budget amendment. For the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty biennium and represents the third budget amendment for twenty twenty. Let me touch uh a little bit on what this amendment includes. Uh, there are three purposes associated with the amendment. Uh, the first is to adjust fund balance. And when I talk about fund balance, a good way of looking at it is if I go to the ATM and I pull out a hundred dollars. And I spend seventy five dollars of that, I have twenty five dollars left in my pocket. And that's kind of a a real simple way to describe what fund balance represents. So basically, it's over time, the amount of money that's come in that hasn't gone out the door. So it's somewhat like, you you could consider it like a savings account. Uh, with the fund balance adjustments that are included in this budget amendment. Now that we have our financial statement audit complete by the state auditors for two thousand nineteen. What we want to do is recognize the difference between what we thought those beginning fund balances were going to be. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen and what they actually are now. And so there's usually a six to seven month lag before we make that adjustment and bring it forth for you. Speaking of that, overall, the net increase to the general fund beginning fund balance was nearly seven point seven million dollars. So fairly substantial. If we look at all of the funds across the city, the total fund balance increase is eighteen point two million dollars. So that sounds like a big number, but uh typically, we do underspend our budget. And I think you can really chalk that up to, we like to take a fairly conservative approach to budgeting. Where we don't want to overestimate revenues, nor do we want to underestimate expenditures. So we're going to have some of that carryover. Another purpose of the amendment is the COVID nineteen related adjustments. And and I'm going to circle back on this, because I think I really would like to finish out with with that discussion. And finally, the third purpose of the amendment is to add budget authority for new programs or other expected changes in twenty twenty. Uh, I do want to emphasize that there are no FTE increases uh as a result of these budget authority or expected changes. Um, and then I'll go through each one of those changes. In the general fund, uh, we're looking to increase revenue expense by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To recognize the affordable housing sales tax credit, which we will use to help fund the South County. Housing and homeless program. The council authorized um this particular sales tax credit through ordinance six, seven. this particular sales tax credit through ordinance six, seven, three, two, which was approved in September of two thousand nineteen. It's important to note that this sales tax credit is a credit against the state sales tax. So the six point five cents per dollar that the state receives. So it didn't have an impact on the total tax rate of ten percent, but rather the state is taking a smaller cut. Another general fund program is to extend the budget for the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission Agreement by a hundred and two thousand dollars. That agreement essentially, we are providing an officer that becomes an instructor or has been an instructor at the training center and the training center reimburses us for that. Continuing that program. We also have the arterial street preservation fund and we're looking to increase that budget by a hundred thousand dollars for funding of advanced design of future arterial street preservation projects. We also just issued revenue bonds for the water utility in June, and so we had not anticipated that particular budget impact when this budget was originally developed. So we're looking to increase the revenue and expenditure authority by eleven million nine hundred ninety three thousand five hundred dollars. And finally, for the equipment rental fund, we're looking to fund two vehicles for the school resource officers. And that's in the amount of approximately a hundred thirty five thousand dollars. So let's talk a bit more about the COVID nineteen adjustments. There has been substantial discussion ongoing for several months now. And I want to take a few moments, though, to recap information the mayor and Jamie shared with you during the two and two meetings in July. Our initial general fund revenue shortfall was six to nine million, which represents about eight to twelve percent of total budgeted general fund revenues. In developing this budget amendment seven, it appears that we're going to fall right in the middle in the estimate now. It's a seven point nine million dollar loss. So in the fact that that six to nine million dollars was worked up with not much in the way of data, it's held water pretty well. To address the expected shortfall, the city is going to take a number of approaches, which include cost cutting measures, reallocating revenues where it's appropriate, or leveraging emergency funding sources. And I do, I know you've heard it, but I do want to emphasize that neither the cuts or the revenue allegation allocation is sustainable beyond twenty twenty without serious impacts to current service levels. The mayor and department directors put in a lot of time in collaboration in developing the mitigation plan. Those measures have been achieved by salary and benefit reductions, freezing open positions, layoff of seasonal temporary workers, voluntary layoffs in early retirement option, delaying projects such as the elevator modernization in City Hall, downtown facade improvement program, service cuts and particularly in parks and rec where many of the events and recreation programs have been canceled. Also leveraging CARES Act funding for COVID response related activity. But we know that that has limitations and can't be used as a revenue replacement. And finally, looking at the reallocation of revenues and good example of that is, you know, sweeping the citywide investment earnings from other funds and placing those in the general fund to address the shortfall. I know that's a lot of information. I wanted to keep it at a fairly high level. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to entertain any questions that counsel may have.
Thank you, Kevin. Again, Jamie's mentioned this and you mentioned again, we're beyond twenty twenty, we're still looking at some issues we need to address. So and I know we'll be looking at that, I believe, as we go forward with our 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 budget meetings coming up here next month. So counsel, any questions for Kevin? Well, I don't see any questions on that particular. Oh, we do.
I thank you for the presentation. Just wanted to make sure I was clear. So the items that you mentioned, and I was writing them down. Was that you were taking that out of the fund balance to cover those things? Is that and then if that's what it is, then was it leave that fund balance at?
So I guess the way I would address that is we're increasing the fund balance for several of the funds as a result of the two thousand nineteen financial performance. So for instance, the general fund, there'll be a seven point seven million dollar increase, the actual fund balance over what we had projected back in early two thousand nineteen. And then in terms of taking something away to help fund the general fund. So with our excess cash, we'll invest that. And typically, our process has been to allocate on a monthly basis, any investment earnings to any fund that has a cash balance. What this budget amendment proposes is that we stop that for two thousand twenty only and allocate those investment earnings directly to the general fund. And that that is something that we've checked with the state auditor's office and it's it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions, counsel, on this ordinance? Okay, Kevin, next item is ordinance number six, seven, eight, five.
Thank you. I'm glad to have them back to back. It's kind of nice. Sorry, Jeff. So ordinance six, seven, eight, five seeks an amendment to several Auburn City Code sections as it relates to utility taxes. And this is going to kind of fall into what we just previously discussed. What we're looking at is taking some utility tax that had previously been allocated to the arterial street refund and directing it solely to the general fund again to address the revenue deficiency as a result of COVID nineteen. Currently, we assess utility taxes at seven percent on city administered utilities and those are water, sewer, storm and garbage. While we assess six percent on non-city utilities or privately, private enterprise utilities and and that's a result of statutory restrictions. And those include utilities such as cable, telephone, phone and electric. In two thousand eight, the city approved an ordinance which directed one percent of utility taxes to the arterial street fund with the remainder going to the general fund. Again, to mitigate the revenue loss, this ordinance would provide the authority to eliminate that one percent distribution to the arterial street fund and direct it solely to the general fund. The action would equate to approximately one point eight million dollars of additional tax distribution to the general fund. And recognizing that that does have an impact on the arterial street fund, what we propose is a one-time transfer of real estate excise tax monies to offset that, not the one point eight million, but to offset the funding that that one point eight million would have provided for current year projects. And with that, I am happy to entertain any questions that counsel has.
Oh, Kevin, could you just quickly explain that a little bit more with the with the REIT offsetting funds to the current projects? Do we know what that dollar amount would look like?
Yes, so that's three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars.
Okay, great. Okay. And again, is this is this is a one-time transfer from REIT? And I believe as we go forward, we're going to still have some issues related to the to REIT being sustainable for future projects.
That that is, that is correct. So and we'll get into that conversation a little bit more with the budget presentations that will unfold next month, mid-month. But yeah, it's taken from one place to move it to another for on a short term basis. And, you know, if we go back to our discussions at the March Counsel Workshop and Retreat, that we have some sustainability issues that ultimately we need to address.
Exactly. Great. Okay, counsel, any further questions for Kevin on this ordinance? All right, Kevin, thank you very much. And you're going to be up again here shortly, so don't go away.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to ordinance number six, seven, eight, six, Director Tate.
Thank you again. Good evening. Ordinance six, seven, eight, six is also referred to as the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. And this item is on page sixty-two of your packet. That's where it begins. And I'm going to run through some talking points. And when we get into questions between myself and Joy Scott, who's on the has joined us as part of the meeting, Community Services Manager, between the two of us, we should be able to answer the lion's share of questions that might come up. So first of all, back in July, we started this conversation, actually July thirteenth during a study session. We presented the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance and it was actually under ordinance sixty-seven eighty at that time. And I'm going to talk about why the number changed here in just a second. But we presented it on July thirteenth and then we moved forward to council floor on July twentieth. We received probably about a dozen, maybe fifteen public comments on the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. Some in favor, some in opposition and some comments with suggested edits. Ultimately, back on July twentieth, when council, when this was on council floor, at that very same time, we were uncertain if the governor was going to extend the moratorium on tent residential tenant evictions. Recall, at that time, it was set to expire on August first. So that's since been extended out to October fifteenth, which has provided a little bit of breathing room to work through an ordinance like a Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. So back on July twentieth, council did take action on ordinance sixty-seven eighty. But you may remember that it was an alternative ordinance where it removed all of the Just Cause Eviction provisions and only adopted some temporary COVID multifamily provisions. And it was one section that was adopted. It was created as chapter five point two four of the Auburn City Code. But it's it was one paragraph and then all the other twelve or so pages of Just Cause Eviction Ordinance were essentially tabled, for lack of a better term. With the agreement that we come back to counsel this evening to talk a little bit more about it and for staff to be able to consider the public comments that were received. And that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So Just Cause Eviction Ordinance sixty-seven eighty-six, it changes the chapter from five point two four to five point two three. I won't spend a lot of time talking about why that is, but it's important for us to provide a different chapter of City Code for the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. And what I'd like to do is walk through some of the changes that are proposed from the prior version that council saw back on July thirteenth and July twentieth. So in going through those changes, I'd just like to point out that when you see strike through an underline, that represents a change from the last version you saw. That's important because sometimes strike through an underline looks like it might be a change to something that's existing, existing code. And so that that's what those changes reflect. And I have to apologize. I have to, Joy, do you mind walking through the changes real quick? I have kind of something going on with my dog right now and I need to step out for just a second. Apologize.
So we can just walk through, starting on, I believe, page five of the ordinance is where you'll see the strike through and underlying changes along with some comments that hopefully you show up in your packet along the side. So one of the, one of the pieces of feedback that we heard was from King County Housing Authority. So some really helpful feedback from them because as we look at increased notice for rental increases, we want to make sure that we take into account that there are some properties that have a very specific income certification and rent adjustment process in place already. So for our subsidized housing providers that have an annual income recertification, where they then adjust the rent amount based on that tenant's income, we don't want to get in the way of that process. And this has been recognized at the state level as well within the Residential Landlord Tenant Act within RCW fifty-nine dot nineteen dot one forty. There is a section of that RCW that includes the same language that we have included here. So that if there is a property where the amount of rent is based on the income of the tenant within a subsidized setting that the the notice should be consistent with what's laid out in state law and with the process that we've heard from that housing provider. We also heard some feedback from the Multifamily Housing Association, the Rental Housing Association. And I believe one or two individual landlords that had some concerns with what was below there in the strike through. And we had some kind of back and forth conversation, but ultimately really wanted to make sure that we weren't coming anywhere near creating a a challenge in intervening in a contract that we shouldn't be stepping into. So after some conversations with our city attorney Dan Hyde, as well as with some of the landlord associations, decided to remove that portion that was formerly A one A. The next piece of feedback that we heard was also from the Washington Multifamily Housing Association and it was about wanting to have the ability to levy additional security deposits if a tenant is bringing in a pet. So ensuring that they have the ability to attach reasonable security deposits if there's the potential for additional damage beyond wear and tear based on pets. So you'll see that about three quarters of the way down that page. As you'll see on page seven of the ordinance, which is the next large strike through section, that's actually the piece of the ordinance that was previously adopted that Jeff talked about. So that's already been adopted by city council. So it's removed from here so that it is not duplicative to what has already been done. On the next page, there are two, two small changes. One is that in in the section of this ordinance that speaks to a notice of sale requirement for low income housing, we wanted to ensure based on some comments that we heard from the Rental Housing Association that that properties that are transferred to family members or transferred through a will or otherwise that are not intended to be listed for sale are not caught up in this process. So if there's a you know, a family or a state transference of of this property, the intent is not to require notification for that before that kind of process takes place. So we wanted to ensure that that was, that that was reflected in the code. The other piece that we heard there was that there might be properties, for example, a five unit property where one of the units is a studio and where otherwise the the units would not Uh, and where otherwise the, um, the units would not be considered. Um, to meet that affordability threshold, but because of that studio unit and studios. Um, more likely to, to be meeting that affordability. Um, of, if it add or below eighty percent AMI, that that would trigger the building. So we wanted to make sure that, um, we clarified that the intent of this is not to, um, have this provision triggered by. Um, by only studio units that make up less than twenty percent of the full units in the building. Um, that we're really looking at properties where there is affordability above and beyond just. Um, a small number of studio units. Uh, the next section, which gets into the Just Cause, um, details of the ordinance. Five dot two-three dot zero-seven-zero. Um, we did receive a helpful comment from the King County Bar Association, that's really more of a, um, clarification of terms. Um, to ensure that, um, that as this is laid out, uh, that it incorporates both. The month-to-month tendencies and term ten- tendencies. Um, this is a little bit of a kind of legal semantics question that came up. That was, of course, the intent as it was presented to you during the last meeting, but there was a question that was raised from. Um, from the King County Bar Association about whether or not that was actually the impact of the ordinance, given the. Um, this particular language not being included. Um, so as it was what we had discussed with council previously in July, um, that, that changes just to reflect that that was the intent. Of the ordinance. Just scrolling through here, so the other piece that, um, that you'll notice in the, in the second to last page of this ordinance. It's page. Thirteen, it actually says thirteen of thirteen, where the following page says fourteen of thirteen, so certainly we'll. Adjust that piece of it, but, uh, the second to last page within the implementation. There are a couple of pieces within this ordinance, um, and in particular, uh, we. Um, similar to what a number of other cities have done and, um, what we see. Um, in some of our neighboring cities as well, including in Burien. Um, part of this legislation directs landlords, um, at the time of. Uh, initial tenancy to provide some written materials to tenants about their rights and responsibilities. Um, as tenants within that property, um, and so these are materials that the city will create and will provide. We will make available on a webpage, and we can also make available in, in print copies if folks need them. Um, but we wanted to make sure that, that it is reflected that, um, both we are welcoming input. Um, on what should be included within those materials, uh, and also that. Uh, that it will take a little bit of time to put them together, so, um, we, we are able to welcome. Um, that input and those materials, um, up until September eighteenth. Um, but we also, uh, will make sure that we have them available prior to the implementation date that is attached to this ordinance. Within this final, um, section, and that's October sixteenth, twenty-twenty. So that is the very high-level overview of the changes. Um, if there are any questions about any of those specific changes or, um, other pieces of the ordinance. Uh, I am happy to, um, do my best to field those.
Has a question.
Joy, thank you very much, Councilmember Sterns.
Thank, thank you, Joy, that, that was a great presentation. Um, so I, I had a, a question, I had, uh, been corresponding with the, with Edmund that were at the King County Bar. And, um, we, we talked about that one particular change you mentioned under the Just Cause Eviction section, which I'm trying to find.
That additional sentence.
Five point two-four-three dot oh, point oh-seven-zero.
Yeah.
Um, to refuse to renew or continue with tenancy, so, um, he seemed to agree with me that. Um, yeah, it really works well in, in, um, Section A, but it might also make sense to. It did to add that as well to, uh, the other sections. D, E, F, and G in particular, so. Um, because if it works in A, it probably should work in those other sections too, so I just wanna make sure we, we didn't forget that.
Oh, thank you very much, and I see where you're, um, where you're referencing in Section G. Um, that it, that it would likely be a natural fit, um, since it used that same sentence structure.
Joy, um, on page sixty-four of our. Our packet, which is item. To be under the hundred-and-twenty-day notice establishment. Um, you know, the question to council is, do we concur with a hundred-and-twenty days, or should we modify ninety days, one-eighty, you know, whatever? Just to throw a thought out there, um. To me, I think a hundred-and-twenty days may be a little bit too long, only in the sense that. You know, perhaps, except for big corporate landlords, you know, there may not be a, a intent to increase the rent. Beyond that threshold, um, during that period of time, I think a shorter period of time to allow. Uh, landlords a little more opportunity to, um, work within their financial parameters, maybe. Maybe justified, I would be comfortable going with ninety days versus the hundred-and-twenty, but I'll leave it open to council for other comments.
Thank you, and just a clarification there, if it's within that threshold below five percent, that amount of notice is not required.
Correct. So, council, any comments from any council members on that particular item? Councilmember Sterns.
Oh, what, what, what page is that?
It's on page sixty-four of our packet. And it's at the top of the page, under B, second, one-hundred-and-twenty-day notice is established. That paragraph.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just going off the ordinance sitting there.
It's on page five of the ordinance.
All right, so it's, and you said D, right?
Yeah, it's just, I'm, I'm looking at it from the, you know, from our. From the background summary, I'm looking at that part of it, but it's.
In the ordinance, it's A one.
Okay.
Yeah. So my, my thought is, instead of a hundred-and-twenty-day notice, I would be comfortable changing that to ninety days.
So from four months to three months, or maybe your increase?
Yes. So that's again for rent increases greater than five percent.
Right, yeah, that's very significant increase, um, you know, I guess, I guess the. You, you know, what the driving factor is, is, um, if that's an increase that. A tenant can't afford, then, you know, you, they, they need time to. Look, get accepted, apply, get accepted, and, and move into another place. So, I'm just not sure about how much time, but what the proper time for that is, but, but that, that's my.
Councilmember Troutman, well, has a question.
You know, I had the same, uh, question, Claude, when Jeff and us, we met at our committee meeting. But I just had a similar situation with, uh, a neighbor who's renting an apartment over here that had the same problem. They increased her rent quite a bit, and it was close to her contract almost being lea-. Running out, uh, but luckily she ended up finding a, a place very quickly in Tacoma. And, uh, she refused to sign the contract, but, uh, they just gave her the, the raise. Uh, very short time, and they wanted her out of there. And so I agree with this hundred-and-twenty days because it allows them to be able. To make sure they find a place, number one, and to have the moving deposit and also the first. Some places ask for first and, and last rent, you know? So I, I agree with the one-hundred-and-twenty days because it allows them to get that money and be able to move out.
All right, okay, thank you, so, Councilmember Marlinga.
Yes, I was, um, Claude, you were mentioning why you wanted to change to ninety, can you remind us and explain a little bit more on that?
I, I, I just felt that, um, perhaps, that, uh, the landlord side, it may be difficult to. Kind of calculate that out six months in advance, you know, maybe not, I don't know, but, you know, to me, it. And, and I fully appreciate and understand, actually, the tenant side, having as much notice as possible. But I just felt that, uh, perhaps a hundred-and-twenty days may be a little bit too long for landlords to respond to. What their needs might be, I mean, we take a lot of pre-planning on their part, effort on their part, or maybe some of them may know, you know, exactly what they're gonna do, but. It, it just seemed to me it put a little bit more burden on the, on the landlords of that particular item. Other council members? Okay, so, um, Joy, I guess what I would say is that, um, you know, that's my own personal comment. And, uh, I'm not hearing anything in opposition of a hundred-and-twenty days, as it's written in the ordinance. So unless the council members, council members have some significant opposition to the hundred-and-twenty days.
Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Baggett.
I believe that, uh, Councilmember Brown had his hand up just before.
Okay, I'm, I don't even, I don't see Councilmember Brown on my screen, so I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown, go ahead.
You were, you were heading the same direction that I was going to talk about, so, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the one-twenty.
Okay, all right. Okay, so again, uh, Joy, I'm not hearing any opposition to the one-twenty, and. I'll withdraw my comment, and let's move forward as it's written in the ordinance.
Okay, so we would hope to bring this back to council at the next council meeting on, um, September eighth, I believe. I appreciate your, your comments and Councilmember Sterns. Um, I will certainly check in with our, um, our legal department and make sure that the language is consistent. Through, through the, the ordinance as suggested.
Great, thank you very much, and Joy, thank you for your time for doing this and good explanation overall. Council, I am going to recommend that we take a five-minute break, we still have quite a few items on the agenda to cover. And according to my time, I have seven-eleven, uh, let's be back here, ready to go at seven-fifteen, so a four-minute break. And we'll reconvene at seven-fifteen. Hey, we're just waiting for a couple more council members here, we'll be ready to go. Very good. Just whenever Councilmember J-Rod's here, it was a second, and here we are. Okay, we will call this meeting back to order, and the next item on our agenda. Is item three F, ordinance number six, seven. I'm sorry, yeah, six, seven, eight, eight, and again, we go to Assistant Director here, uh, for this ordinance, Kevin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and if I might, uh, Joan Nelson is with us this evening, is primed to speak to the subject, so I'd like to hand it off to her.
Hey, welcome, Joy.
Thank you, so, um, ordinance six, seven, eight, eight is, uh, for us to continue the waiver. Of our shut-offs and late fees until October fifteenth, this will put us in line with the Governor's Proclamation twenty-two-three dot seven. Um, that was announced earlier this month, that extends that waiver for statewide until October fifteenth. Any questions?
Any questions, council? No questions, glad we're doing this, and that was quick and easy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, now, next on my agenda, I had, it was listed as item four G, I believe it's item three G. So this will be ordinance number six, seven, eight, seven, uh, vehicle impounds. And, um, this, I guess, would be Director Como, or Harry, you presenting this evening?
Director Harry, uh, thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council for hearing from me, I wanted to get this on the agenda for tonight, this proposed ordinance. Because there's some interplay with the RV parking that we, um, discussed earlier on tonight's, uh, agenda. Um, there's a case that came out from our appeals court pretty recently, some of you might have heard about it, City of CL versus Long. Uh, it's a case that precludes, the short synopsis of the case is, it precludes. Towing companies from, uh, keeping an impounded vehicle to pay for impounded storage costs. If the owner of the vehicle uses the vehicle as a residence. And so, um, the way that we design our towing program is, we have con- our police have contracts with the towing companies. And all we do is, is simply order the impound, the storage, and, uh, the towing is, is, you know, handled by the towing company. So the, the brunt of the effects of the long opinion is gonna be on them as opposed to us. But when I reviewed our code, I saw a couple of ordinances that I've identified in the, you know, in the background summary there. That have language that require, um, payment of those fees before the vehicle can be released, and so to. Uh, be in line with that recent opinion, I just added, I'm suggesting to add the language, unless otherwise required by law. Into each of those sections, that would open up that exception. To comply with that court case, so. Simple as that.
So, Harry, thank you very much. Okay, we will now move into our municipal services discussion items, and for that, we will turn the beat over to Councilmember Sterns.
There we go. Okay, well, we we just have the, is it just the one item, right? The fireworks. So um we have an update um on on the Fourth of July fireworks from Chief O'Neil. So um with that, please, Chief, go ahead.
Uh hi, this is Commander Betts. I'm gonna be taking chief spot tonight, sorry. So the um I think it was included in everyone's packet for tonight. Uh sorry, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I think the fireworks report was included. Um I'm just gonna go over that and then if that's okay, and then after I'm done, feel free to ask any questions that you'd like. Uh twenty twenty, um the fireworks year was just as unique as the rest of this year so far. So um I'll go over this. Uh so we've continued our zero tolerance policy on the possession and our discharge of legal fireworks in the city. One thing unique for this year was that the city ordinance was changed in two thousand or twenty twenty to reflect the ability of officers to issue civil infractions instead of criminal citations. So that was the first year that we've done that this year, and that was changed in city code. Also for this year, Officer Gould, who is assigned to the uh Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, did a great job of cultivating relationships with the tribe monthly with monthly meetings. Um Sonny Jerry was the Commissioner for fireworks this year, and he was great to work with. Uh this was actually my first year coordinating the fireworks response for the city and for the police department. And um Sonny was great to work with the entire time. Uh additionally, Mike Jerry was fantastic as well, uh giving us uh periodic updates uh whenever they were about to have shows with vendors, and then we were able to distribute that information online via Facebook to the community, and we seemed to get a a good response there uh from community members. Some were happy, some were not, but they at least liked the notification. Uh the tribe continued with the same hours of um operations at the stands that they have in years past. Uh this year was a little bit different as far as the dates they were there. They arrived about thirty days later than normal due to COVID nineteen, uh but there did not appear to be any restrictions. And when um when they were asked if there was any additional restrictions at the stands, they didn't have any. So they just arrived thirty days later and and began selling and did very well. So didn't seem to impact their sales. Uh they would stay open until uh about uh ten PM or twenty-two hundred hours, uh Sunday through Thursday, and then on Fridays and Saturdays, they would stay open till midnight. Uh Fourth of July continued with the same. Uh they stayed open uh till about uh one in the morning, but they could have stayed open till about two in the morning on July fifth. We ran our fireworks. Uh we do um fireworks enforcement emphasis patrols that started on January twenty-fourth, and they ran through July fifth this year. There were only, I believe, two days that we had two more, more than one officer working. And uh we also had six officers and one sergeant work the stands area and the discharge. And then we assigned one sergeant and six officers to work in the north end, one sergeant and six officers to work in the south end, and then uh one op, one sergeant and six officers to work the city parks, which was a uh new deployment this year for our fireworks deployment. All those assignments were from uh three PM to about one AM. Some of the results we had, um just to give an update on man-hours, we had seven officers work a total of sixty-three hours between the twenty-fourth of June and July fifth. Uh and then uh that's up from uh two thousand and nineteen. And then uh there were six, there was only six hours in one shift that went on fill, but again, that was uh on the nights where we had multiple officers. And then on July fourth, like I already stated, we had um the three sergeants and and eighteen officers working in the three different deployment areas. And that was up from last year as well. And that was just to put an emphasis on the city parks, because in years past, we've had um quite a few issues with uh lots of garbage and lots of people leaving the uh coming into the city and then using the city parks as a recreational area for shooting off, discharging fireworks. Uh so we wanted to try and mitigate that the best we could uh for the for the city and for the citizens. And so that's, that was a big emphasis for us this year. And it seemed to be very successful. Um we had no reported injuries to officers this year. We had no uh major injuries to citizens. There was one minor injury that occurred up at the stands area uh with someone getting hit with, I think, I think some bottle rockets or something like that in the leg, but it was very minor injuries and uh the fire department attended to the person right there at in the stands. The peak hours for fireworks calls, these are always a hot topic for everyone, and this is uh the peak out, the peak activity hours for fireworks calls was between nine PM and twelve AM on the Fourth of July. Most of the emphasis units uh secured at about one AM on the Fifth of July. Um and there were only five fireworks-related calls uh to Valleycom, our dispatch center, between uh one AM and eight AM on July fifth. So that carryover, the carryover of the night from July fourth there. Uh the stands were shut down by stands officers, six extra emphasis officers, and in coordination with um Sonny Jerry and his fireworks uh security members at about uh one AM on July fifth. And that took about forty-five minutes to complete. Um I can tell you, because I was up there personally, that the stands in the discharge area were the uh had the most amount of people that I have ever seen in fourteen years. So um I think with the, uh and I'll hit on this later, but with the issues related to just COVID nineteen and everybody trying to navigate through that and how they wanna try and live their life and and celebrate the Fourth of July, that resulted in a lot of people going to the discharge area because there were no other public demonstrations going on. Uh and so we had a lot of people there. Uh we chose to keep it open a little bit later so that they, the folks would not gravitate to other areas like city parks and open parking lots like they have in the past. And just to try to mitigate that risk and uh have have it be more centralized rather than let it uh go all over the place and uh be have a little less control. So um again, people were very good up there for the most part, very responsible, and um then they, they all vacated about one forty-five is when everybody was out of the discharge in the stands area. So the Fourth of July on a snapshot, the total of a hundred and sixty-three fireworks-related calls for service between uh eleven AM on the Fourth of July and eight AM on July fifth. And then then you get a breakdown of calls per district. And um if you don't know, we have six districts that the police department works with in the city. And so we go through these districts and we look at the amount of calls. Our one and our two districts are up north, along with our three district, which is our east hill. Our one district is our west hill. Uh the four district is downtown uh downtown and uh over by the uh Super Mall and then, or sorry, Outlet Collection, excuse me. And uh then down by Twenty-first Street, Twenty-ninth Street, southeast, down in that area towards M Street. Uh and then the, we have our District Five, which is Lakeland Hills, Thirty-seventh Street, southeast. East Valley Access Road, all that over there, and then District Six, which is um up by the casino, um and then discharge area. And you can see those calls um per district there. And then down in this chart below, and just to give credit to our crime analyst, Joe Ryan did a fantastic job putting this putting the statistics together for me. It just shows that our 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 number-two district up north was by far busiest district. Our calls for service, it shows um the calls for service in the last uh five years and how it's varied. Obviously, we went down from last year, which is kind of an interesting statistic due to uh the amount of people that were actually home this year. And so there's our calls, but I, that probably has a lot to do with the uh not a lot to do with, but there may have been a, an impact as far as the lack of public shows as well, because we can get some complaints um as a result of those. If you go down to Fourth of July calls by district over the years, uh so these is, this is kind of an interesting statistic to look at these. It looks like only um we had one district, I'm sorry, two districts, the two district and the four district that actually went up in calls, and the rest were actually at the same or down compared to um last year. So then, then we go into um calls for service and other valley agencies and how we compare here in Auburn versus Taquilla, Renton, Federal Way and Kent. And we have significantly less calls than Kent, um slightly more than Federal Way and um more than Renton and Taquilla, which uh obviously Taquilla has a far lower population when the South Center Mall is shut down. Continuing on to the statistics here, fireworks season over the years. And this is, this is, a lot of these statistics, these statistics in this block, in this graph will be more of a reference of civil infraction, the change over to civil infraction versus criminal citation. So the arrests made were zero, the infractions were eleven, and we had five hundred and eleven calls between June first and July fifth. So our calls, our overall calls in that time period were up, the most we've ever had. Um I think that is probably attributed to people staying at home. Um and and then the COVID nineteen issued stay-at-home order, um the things that people are able to do there. Uh and then there's the calls per district again uh between Ju-June first and July fifth. You see again in that um, in that, in that chart there that uh the patrol, the two district is very, very high followed by the sixth district, and then um the other districts fall in line there as well. Moving on down, it just has a map of all of our calls that our crime analyst puts together. This is just uh more fantastic work by Joe there. Joe Ryan, if you don't know his name. Confiscated fireworks, uh seven hundred fifty-one fireworks that were const- confiscated located in the storage consi, in the storage container that we keep down at GSA for this time period. Uh and that was a decrease from last year, and I will go into uh the reason for that decre- decrease here um later. But it was a significant decrease. Um and that was uh more of a result of we were attempting to be sensitive to the needs of the citizens and while also enforcing um new city ordinance and the um speci, being sp- sensitive specifically to the current uh perception of law enforcement in America today. And so we decided to um implement a system where we would uh give a warning the first time that we walk, uh that we approach someone about the fireworks, and that means not confiscating their fireworks and try to give education and have them go up to the stands area or another place to legally discharge their fireworks instead of confiscation with the, with the hope that we would not escalate a situation uh that would result in an unnecessary use of force. Uh so that was the thinking behind that, and the um, the result was the lack of confiscations of fireworks there. So this is uh, we shared a Spec Ops channel. That's uh Spec Ops is a radio channel on our, on our radios and that we shared that with uh VRFA again this year. And they did a fantastic job. They were able to stage near the uh discharge area at a a substation, and they were able to respond quickly and efficiently to any issues, including the minor injury that was up at the stands area. Um as I mentioned earlier, there was an emphasis placed on patrolling in parks. Um at one point, there were about a hundred and fifty to two hundred people located up at Lee Hill Park. Um officers did a great job of diffusing that situation while also um reinforcing that the folks can't be at the park and that they needed to go uh somewhere else to discharge their fireworks. One issue we had was traffic on Auburn Way South. It was backed up for most of the evening and after, or sorry, most of the afternoon and the evening due to the left turn lane to being intermittent, and that's something that I'll work on next year with uh city engineering to try to get that on constantly so that we can clear up traffic and not have citizens be impacted as they're traveling outbound towards their homes and or shopping or whatever they want to do. And then one thing that we found this year was that some of the parking lots of the Auburn schools were targeted uh just by citizens to to use as discharge areas. And so one way we can mitigate that next year is that we can have, uh we do have three uh school officers that are assigned to the um school district. And we can have them patrol um much like the park emphasis units did. So we did a, what I assigned this year was a north emphasis, a central emphasis, and then a south emphasis. And so that's what we can do next year with the uh school police as well, as we can have them work the Fourth of July and then make sure that the schools stay relatively garbage-free and and firework discharge-free as well. As we move further in here, um just I mentioned earlier, but uh I spoke to Director Faber after the Fourth of July, and he had mentioned that uh there were small pockets of garbage in the parks, but the annual vandalism to the park's property was minimal compared to prior years. So that was a, that was a very uh positive thing that came out of this, and the park's emphasis showed the, showed the good impact there. We've already, already addressed the uh confiscated fireworks. And then um it was just something, just to hit on one more time. It was just uh with all the issues that people have with the, or people have had with the COVID nineteen pandemic and stay-at-home orders and and the um, uh and some of the anti-police sentiment. We were just trying to be very sensitive to all that this year while also enforcing um city codes and state laws and uh trying to weigh the balance of justice in that way. So um we felt it was a very successful year, and uh no citizens were injured other than the minor injuries, no officers were injured. We didn't have to use force at all, and so it was a, it was a good year. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you so much for that uh great report. Do we have any questions?
Councilmember Trump, I'll have a question.
Thank you, Sam, for uh the great uh update on the fireworks. When you were out there and you were talking to people about uh, and you didn't give them citation, you just gave them a verbal warning. Did you, did any of you take their discharge display away from them, from them continuing to fire those uh fireworks that go up and blow up?
Well, sometimes we did and sometimes we didn't. We did issue the eleven infractions, and so in those cases, I don't know specifically in each case, but I would assume that, yes, they did take the the fireworks when they issued the infraction, because that was the directive. But the directive was also that they were able to give them a warning the first time they went out there, and they did not issue an infraction. They were able to give them a warning and they did not confiscate their fireworks at that time. So they would dir, give them the war, the verbal warning and then direct them to the discharge area or another legal area where they were able to discharge them.
Okay, you were right about, I live up here on the Muckleshoot Hill, and you were right about the access amount of people out there at the site, uh but also out here in the neighborhood area. This was the worst year on every side of me. There were people, you know, and I'm, and I'm probably before Mr. Pelosi, when he lived up here. I'm the next councilwoman that has a lot of complaints about it, because I hear it from all of my neighbors that they've called the police and I see that we were high on on the calls, and that they feel that they're being left out because, just because they live on the reservation and we're not being heard about the illegal fireworks that are going off right next door to us. And um so I was just, you know, I'm I'm glad you said you stopped and you gave these people warnings. Uh so next year, say we're completely out of the COVID. Are we going to um do more of the giving citations or anything like that? Because people will have a chance to be out of the house and do more.
Uh I mean, that's, yeah, I think that's a possibility. I think that's something that we should, we should discuss and address um as a city. Uh I think one of the main points besides COVID was just everything that's going on in the country with social unrest. And we uh did not want to put the city um or an officer in a um unnecessary position this year. Given the recent events in the country. And we were just attempting to be very, very sensitive to that. Um and that was one of the main intents with the uh with the warning procedure this year. And I don't see why we can't go back to not giving a warning next year, but I think it um will just take all the, all of the uh. Factors into into account next year and then we will do make a deployment plan and and do what we think is the best thing for the city and the officers.
Right, and I agree with you. I I'm all for safety first and the safety of our police officers so well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Raj Malanga and Brown have questions?
Commander Betts, uh good evening. How are you?
Good, I'm good. Thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Um thank you for the uh information that you provided. Uh it's very good. Uh and for all the work that you folks put into it. Looking at the chart for the firework calls by district. Where is District Two about? I know you said the north side, but I'm not, didn't get it quite clearly.
Yes, I'm sorry. And I should, what I should have done is I should have included a map of our districts and I'll do that for next year. I apologize.
Okay, no worries, no worries.
District Two is going to be uh from Main Street and then up Auburn Way North. Um that will be the west border and then the east border would be, the east border would be basically the river. As a river, yeah, so that would be District Two. And then all the way.
All the way up to?
To two seventy-seventh.
Okay, so seems like that's where we get a lot of fireworks compared to all the other districts. Wh- what is the reasoning behind that? Would you know by any chance?
I've, I've been rocking my brain and um I I don't have. I don't have a good answer to that question. I uh I'm, I'm not sure to be honest with you. Uh it's a lot of residences, uh residential housing, it's um so we don't, we do have a few parks there. So Brandon Park is a hotspot for fire discharge area and there's no way to close the park. So that's part of one of the problems. So uh other parks, that's something that I had discussions with Director Faber about prior to um the Fourth of July this year. Was closing, being able to close the parks to mitigate the uh issues that we have uh in city parks and that's one that we can't close. So that was an emphasis for the parks deployment officers. Uh and then there's a couple other parks in that area as well. But no, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't really have a good answer for you as far as why that that seems to be more than other uh districts. That is a, as far as um call volume, we do have a higher call volume in that district as well, just in normal calls.
Okay, um so would you, is there a specific spot in that particular district? That the calls are coming from?
Um I mean, as I'm looking through the map there, uh it looks like, I mean, it's kind of spread around, it's kind of hit and miss there. There's quite a few just up in the, between um East Main and up to about Eighth Street. There's quite a few, there's a pocket there, uh there's a pocket, there's a pocket over by like uh twenty-second and and uh I Street in that area.
Okay.
Um there's a pocket by Brandon Park if you're looking at the map as well. So um there's kind of those three different pockets and I think that's, you know, we can use this map to attempt to um. Deploy our officers in those area and in air, in those areas and then kind of direct the enforcement in those areas in the future. It it honestly, it seems like on the Fourth of July that it's just popping up everywhere though.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. Uh it was happening behind my house too, so. So I have another question and that has to do with. Sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought. Oh, I got it. So what happens to the confiscated, confisc- confiscated, ah, I'm losing my. My vocabulary here for the fireworks. Once it's confiscated, what happens to it?
So the fire mar- uh the Fire Marshal Josh Rogers takes those from uh V R F A. And they dispose of those. Um so he has, we kept that Conex container down there at G S A for a while. And he collected up all the fireworks and then he takes care of them and I, I don't, I don't have any involvement in that portion of it.
Okay.
Um I just have the uh, uh he disposes of them.
All right. Thank you very much for your answers. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your questions.
Are there any more questions?
So member Malanga, Councilmember Brown and Deputy Mayor DeCoursey have questions.
Ooh, hot topic, all right.
Yes, hi, thank you for your presentation tonight. Um my question really quick, as I saw that we had a a very high call volume as you showed us this year. Um but on average, I think you guys told us before, but I don't remember. About how many calls do we get in a month? Cause this would be in addition to what you guys normally get. So how many do we normally get a month?
Uh well, we had eighty-six thousand calls last year, um just in the city. Uh eighty-six thousand calls for service. Um and so split over a month. I mean, I think we're talking um. I can't remember what we have. I haven't looked at the calls, calls for service per month lately. But uh, I mean, so this is cutting into those calls a little bit, but not very significantly there, so. Yeah, I mean, we had eighty-six thousand calls last year and then ninety-six thousand the year before.
Yeah, I can do the math. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, Commander uh Larry Brown here. I just want to express my appreciation. Uh for the sensitivity around use of force and the times we're living in. Just wanted to express that. I thought that was very wise and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I I just have a comment to make regarding District Two. I believe that's where Councilmember Bagu and I reside. And uh along the levee, Councilmember J Raj. It it is very, very active all the time. Um the two days are especially. So it it is really booming and really going right on the levee and, you know, it it seems to be a popular spot. So as Commander said, you look at I Street, the twenty-second, Brandon Park, and then down, you know, a little further north of where we are. Um that's just a, a real hotbed of activity right there where where we, where we go. And uh, you know, I I used to do commercial fireworks shows in Southern California, so I was a power technician. And I blew up those big um fireworks that go up and blow up, including the the mega sized ones. And uh some of the ones that go up and blow up here are pretty good size because you can hear the, you can hear the salutes going off, which is a little big bangs. And uh they're pretty good size. They're more than a little two-inch jobs that you get at some of the fireworks stands and uh they do go, go up a few hundred feet. So um, you know, I, and I just want to say I really appreciate the efforts that the police department has put in this year. And especially as we look at issuing the citations versus arrests. I think that's a big plus for our city and a big plus for our citizens. So thank you, Commander.
Oh, you're welcome. And um Councilmember Malanga, if I could follow up with your um question about calls for service. I have that um information for you if you'd like that.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So um, so we had in July, uh we had six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven calls for service. Uh and then I ca- I have the other months as well if you want those or.
No, 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 it's okay. I just trying to see the average. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, definitely. So it's i- if I'm looking at these numbers, just a rough average off the top of my head, we're probably at about six thousand calls per month.
And if I remember correctly, wasn't that one of, we were one of the higher cities in the area?
Yes, I believe so. Um I am uh. I'm looking at uh some of the different um PDFs from the different um cities and I'd have to. They're each, uh Valleycom puts them out on. One at a time, so I'd have to look at, I'd have to put them all together there. But uh, but yes, we are one of the higher calls uh per officer and then calls per month in the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Some of that, though, is uh the self-generated CAD calls?
Absolutely. Yeah, sorry, that that does include, thank you, Mayor, that does include uh traffic stops and citizen contacts that are initiated by our officers and other on viewed calls. Uh when our officers are still being very proactive.
Okay, great. Well, um thank you again. Just wanted to say a couple things and I have one question. Um but first of all, um you know, it's good to hear that the uh the escalation approach is paying off, so good to hear that. Um it was also good to read that uh, you know, the cooperation with the tribe was was excellent. That's good to hear too. Uh third thing is, um yeah, I live right in the heart of uh District Two up on thirty uh thirty-second Street. And uh, you know, there, I think there's still a couple fireworks on top of my rear haven't gotten off. But I can look in the roofs of all the other houses and there's all kinds of, all kinds of fireworks still on them. Um it's a hotspot. I have a few theories, but I won't share them. But the the question I had is um i- i- in the report. On um the third page under results, the very last sentence says it was considered. Um that this decision has negatively impacted the city as a whole in the past, so the request was denied. So I'm I'm wondering, what what does that mean? What what what, what is, what is that sentence?
Uh yes, that's a great question. Thank you. And this was in reference to the request to uh close a discharge area. And so as I'd um, I just spoke about it briefly and I should have explained it more in depth. But uh previously, in previous years, we have closed a discharge area early. Which has then um caused people to leave discharge area because we're closing it down. And now they go into parking lots or parks. Um a couple of years ago, it was Les Cove Park. And um we then lose control and we um enable folks to um. There's a lot of garbage that we don't have any, the manpower to really clean up in an efficient manner. And it ends up costing the city more money to do that and to clean it up. And then uh also um we just lose the control of the, of the citizens who are actually discharging the fireworks. Instead of having a safe, controlled area, we lose that control. So that's why we chose to keep it all together in the discharge area.
Okay, great. That that makes total sense. I I thank you. Really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's nothing else. Then back to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Sterns, and once again, thank you, Commander, for the report. Okay, Council, any other discussion items this evening? Any new business? Okay, no hands raised, so thank you everyone very much. And uh as I've been out in the bow in Auburn, I see a lot of people wearing masks. Uh greatly appreciate it. Everybody keep it up and uh wear your mask every day when you're not able to socially distance. And uh keep it up Auburn. We're doing a good job and hopefully our numbers will start to come down. So have a good evening, everybody. Thank you again. We are adjourned.